Chris Walken Associates.
Well, I think. Only join they should.
What began as a statue of manifestation.
I mean, we're early.
Yeah.
I think they just pop in, don't they?
Yeah.
Like a lot of things these days, it all started with one tweet. TV for Tulsa tweeting three days ago. Santa Clara men's cross country team is the most incredible thing I've ever seen. A hundred sixty thousand or so likes later and a run through the roster. Not to argue that, sure, there's the cool quaff of Dominic. Age filled with vaccinaries of smiles and hair stone. From the Dupree brothers to Spencer Fisher's stash. A handlebar that seems to be mishandled. It's like a war leader, something like that, general. Yeah, Oliver Brandon Upton, looks like he just woke up today. And Harvey Chilcock, or should I say Harvey Volta. Hold at the bottom of the page, you'll find. The articles, Josh and Holy. No, Josh didn't always look this way, like when he was helping set the school relay record at Timberline in twenty nineteen. A year before Nick was Iowa's Gatorade Runner of the Year for Bishop Kelly. But those accolades fail in comparison. They had my public news articles, it's been like pretty surreal. This roster fix began as a fanciful idea for facial hair about ten years ago. I I never had thought of like kind of destroying my roster. That tradition has since taken a turn. So are we just on? And the responses have been almost disgraceful, like this description of Nick's pic. My daughter says this dude is on his second divorce with six kids, four from the first wife, two for the second, and he lives in his car.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We were getting creative, went to the uh, the coast and everything. That's been trending comments that Nick looks like he's like forty five.
Others look like they had a fight with their barber. Yeah, because it's a deep, oh, but you stuck with it. Is it gonna stay? Of the running season. We gotta ready the teams here, so she's very excited to show the world. You know, it's a day did too. In fact, Nick Russell, the fifth year senior from Bishop Kelly. And you're qualified for the NCAA championships two years ago. Program passed in the ten thousand years from last year. They took home twelve all academic awards in twenty twenty three. This year, well, this year's different. They're back in the spotlight again, though. But guess what? Yeah, Josh, once again, there are two boys from boys, you gotta see.
Yes, I think I figured it out back then. So your password, you have your own, is new Jackie, capital J, Jackie, capital dog, oh nine one seven, exclamation point, exclamation point. So you have to.
Because he saw something.
I'm right there.
Anybody across the headshots better? Not according to Santa Clara, he was teammates for both teams too. Uh, Austin Claw, did you guys look at Ted Root and Kate Keller? Perfect. All right, Liz Hocken, how much of a decision goes to Santa Clara did these headshots?
I think like just seeing that, you know, even though it's a serious like D one collegiate athletic team, like just at the end of the day, they're just a bunch of guys who can be like a little bit unserious and take seriously bad pictures. I think he did a great job. I think one of my favorites, uh, out of all the roster photos was shout out to Cory Brooks, even though the rest of twenty minutes before we actually took the picture. We took him outside, uh, in like the arena, the picture there that he shaved a circle around the top of his head and left the side long. And Austin, you're kind of, you're just kind of swooped forward.
Yeah. Guys, I was, but I'm like, maybe seventy eyes have like slits in their eyebrows the night before. We're like, what should we do? All right, we're in. I had to slip, I flipped it over and I just kind of like, I almost also adjusted to keep it less, but then also. I honestly kind of put a little bit of inspiration from uh, people from possible groups and other good guys. And I decided that I wanted to do that. And then I was a little bit, so I just kind of put a bunch of hair gel in my hair and tried to do the best mohawk that I could. Something mustache or about like. Died a little bit too dark the night before. Why not keep it like that? It ju- it just looks gross at the end of the day. Like I just, I I couldn't keep it any longer. I was like, I was ready to save it all.
Oh, honey, I'm sorry.
Thought you were done.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to stop.
Santa Clara, wait, you're the guys with the headshots, right? But to be fair, it it kind of keeps them humble. Austin Volus. They also get recognized as a school where basketball player Steve Nash went and played very well. The all time leader in assists, played eighteen years in the NBA, but is also known as Captain Canada. But I actually don't like these guys, although was once known as Mayor of Canada, so they're back.
Jack, somebody in.
Jack.
Why do you want this download?
Takes forever. Are you gonna use this?
Well, yeah, it's hopefully it'll work.
Jack.
Are they on yet?
Nope.
Well, hopefully it works. You should tell Chris you're zooming in.
Steph? Steph? It's five thirty. It's five thirty.
I know, it's five thirty. Okay, that's not how you want to do it, the thing you made, you want to go.
Okay, here we go, go, go. Let's see.
I didn't do anything.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah. I know.
That's somebody else coming in. It needed?
No.
All right, it is five thirty two, and we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, welcome to the common council, city of Bellevue, Idaho, Monday, September twenty third, twenty twenty four. Council meeting. Those on Zoom, please reminder, remind, keep yourself on mute, raise your hand if you have any questions, uh, people here at City Hall. Um, mute your phones except for emergency personnel. You know, roll call, please, Mr.?
Hey, I'm Johnson.
Yes.
President Jordan Lee.
Yes.
Amber Corr.
Yes.
Amber Lakey.
Yes.
Amber Mahoney.
I saw him say yes, but we can't hear.
He's muted.
Oh, yes, yes.
May I, Roberta?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. So by a regular meeting notice and agenda, we're posted in accordance with Idaho code seventy four two oh four within forty eight hours prior to the meeting at City Hall. The city of Bellevue City Hall post office and on the city's website on September nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
I knew that the notice for the September twenty third, twenty twenty four regular meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho code section seventy four dash two zero four. Second.
Out there.
Hey.
Call for conflict, is that line Idaho code seventy four four four? Somebody have any conflict with the next agenda?
No.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, um, I'm just gonna announce this now, um, item six, the Howard Preserve event for the haunted forest, uh, by petitioner Tammy Day. Um, she has retracted her petition and will no longer be moving forward with the permit uh, to conduct the haunted forest at the Howard Preserve. She has another plan and be looking to reach out to uh, local community businesses and doing something uh, more in our downtown core. So item six will be uh, removed from the agenda tonight. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for items of concern, not on the agenda. Again, please uh, limit your comments to thirty five minutes. Let's state your name and address for the record. I see none in City Hall. And who do you have online?
Uh, Werner Moravitz, uh, one nine eight Muldoon Canyon Road, uh, uh, Idaho Range.
All right, Werner, what do you have?
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor and City Council, um, I, you know, we obviously haven't had the meeting yet, Chris, that you alluded to at the last public meeting, which, you know, is understandable. I'm ready and available. Um, but what I wanted to follow up here is on the spring data, just because I haven't heard um, anything from you or Shane. On on July thirtieth, uh, I met with Shane to review the skate on the tank records. Uh, seven weeks ago, and at that time Shane had had taken the tank flow records for two thousand twenty four home and said he'd bring them to to the office the next day. And then you and Shane had both expected to have the skater data up and running and available online. Um, after meeting with skate engineers that week. And I just, I haven't been able to get a response since. Um, you called about a month ago saying you'd provide it to me. Um, but I just don't want another fall, a summer's gone by. I don't want another fall to go by too, without being able to see that data. So I guess my question is, could I come in tomorrow or Wednesday? I know, I know the tank data uh, from the springs and from the wells are there, I mean, assuming um, Shane brought him in, you know, brought him back from his house, you know, seven weeks ago. I'm assuming they're just in the office. And could I just come in and make copies of them? And then I'd love to get an update on the skater data on the springs, um. But, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the status is there, if anything's changed, or if you have any new information there. Uh, and if you, and if you don't have it, then I'm thinking we should verify accuracy at the spring. It's just the old, you know, the old school way with a with a measuring stick. Um, so yeah, that's, those are my comments. Thanks for your uh, consideration.
Thank you, Werner. Um, I'll be in touch with you either tonight or tomorrow.
Okay, great, appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Uh, seeing none at this time, I'll go ahead and close public comment items of concern out on the agenda. Um, item number four, um, old business approval of resolution twenty three ninety two, resolution, the city of Bellevue, Idaho authorized the mayor to execute an agreement of services with Lunsford excavation excavation for snow removal services, the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. There were some things that we wanted to correct. We wanted to identify the scope of work. And um, could we make those corrections? Questions, comments, concerns?
Um, I see that the section about the exhibit one B was removed from the contract. And from my recollection, that was compensation schedule. So how do we want to disremedy this contract so that it all makes sense? My question.
Side one B was the quote given to us by Lunsford, which should remain in the contract. It states what their hourly rate is for the services provided. If you look up and you add all the services provided, if they were having a full crew doing everything all at once, um, you know, it comes down to similar to what our contract was prior. Project prices have a change, we tend to use that quote as part of this contract. Rick, do we need to put it back in the contract? The hours, um, the item B and the agenda packet.
Exhibit B. Yeah, so under exhibit A and then you, the exhibit B was stricken from the contract and removed. Just want to make sure we're not leaving important information out of our contract.
Those pieces are pertinent about the leak. So resubmit with exhibit B as in the contract. We'll make that amendment.
Is that those pieces dirty in here?
It looks like somebody put scope word, that was it today. The headline for the uh, public services. Oh, no, that's exhibit A as well, never mind.
So we're referring to exhibit one B? Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it, did that get your question answered?
Yes, so.
It does, it just says one B needs to be put back in the contract, not, not scratched out.
But on page, what, two pages over, I have almost the same thing, right?
Well, that's from the previous.
That's from the previous, okay.
And so we're bringing that back in.
Okay.
And then I had a question, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
About item uh, number.
About item number four, use of city equipment. That appears to be stricken in its entirety. And and I, I called Casey today to ask him about that and he relayed to me that in the event that contractors' equipment were to break at some point and become unusable and we were still in the middle of a snow event that we would, I know, I could do the same thing with my packet. Um, that our city equipment could be used at the sole discretion of the Public Works Superintendent to get us through that snow event. Does that kind of summarize?
Yes, and that, and that's where our attorney was asking for counsel's guidance as to what counsel would like. It, it was my suggestion that if we're, and it happens, if we're in, in a major snow event and for some reason his grader won't operate, it would be my suggestion to let him use our grader, billing him the same price as what he think billing us for is to get the job done. We, we don't want to go without mainstream being allowed.
So you'd want to put contractor may use in case of emergency, the annual approval of the city's Public Works Superintendent. So what other snow removal equipment would, would they be using?
Possibly a loader.
And what would, and then move to bill them?
The same, what they're charging for the same equipment.
Okay, we don't say rate that they're running us.
Right, fully reimbursed for, I mean, just if he was charging us.
And so could, could we also add language that says the Public Works Superintendent or designee, just in the event that you're unavailable? That work for you, Rick?
Yeah.
All right.
So in your grader, it would be one eighty-five, but what about the person running it? And so it's one eighty-five plus, what, labor is first, the shovel worker.
Exactly. That was kind of a question that I had that I hadn't raised. I'm assuming that these equipment rates come with an operator because the only labor cost is a shovel.
I think we're gonna have to, personally, I think we have to come up with our own rate schedule because these rates include labor. So we have to.
To rent it back.
To rent it back. I think we just have to have our own rate schedule unless you guys think different because my understanding is these rates include labor. So if we're billing it back, then it would be on the cheap. Yeah, okay.
So if we take the labor at seventy dollars and then subtract, so the John Deere grader is at one eighty-five, minus seventy dollars for labor. So then we'd rent the grader for one fifteen.
Yeah, I'm just thinking perhaps we compensate for that. Or have our, have our own rate schedule.
Can you understand what we're in there for that, and you, could you come up with something?
Unless you can come up with better language to short, shorten it to fully reimbursed for the cost of it. And it, in, in my recommendation, it'd be very short term. I mean, he, he would use it to get through that snow event and have another piece of equipment on his property the next day to do whatever he wants to bring in something new. Sometimes it can't be fixed before the next snow. That doesn't mean, there's not something in Twin Falls Boise that can be brought in. We, we don't want to be supplying other than emergency.
So on their exhibit B, they have some equipment and with prices next to it. On their exhibit B, they have some rates. They back respond and if anything, they would be using every, every one of those things is a.
Yes, and that's, that's what one of the council people brought up. It would be, it would be that price minus the, the operator's cost. Because it'd be supplying the operator.
We're not entirely sure what that is. Yeah, it looks like every equipment prices include.
Does there, did we check, just expanding into this discussion, did we check that their insurance covers use of other people's equipment? And will, I would just recommend, and I mean, our lawyer will confirm this, but we would probably want to be an additional insured if they, in the event of an emergency or however, if they were to get behind our equipment. Yeah, so.
We'll tell it only forty dollars less. The grader, that's that's ridiculous. Maybe I should get a new job. Not snow removal.
I'm glad we're working on this now so that we have time to find our, our snowheads.
Okay, so what I hear is we need to identify the compensation rate for labor used on city leased equipment. Meaning if their equipment goes down and they're using the city equipment, the rate that we'll charge them to use it and their labor charge to run it. And then the second one, contractor with approval from the street supervisor or appointee or designated appointee. They use designated equipment and the event contractor's equipment is out of service during a snow event. That will be price based on the rates.
Mayor, in the language that I also dummied up, I had stated that in the event contractors' equipment breaks during a snow removal event in the city of Bellevue, so that we specify that their equipment goes down when they're working here in the city and not somewhere else. And, and it becomes a, an issue further down the road that we'll have to say, well, now, when did that break? I mean, I just, you know, don't want to have those red flags issued. And so if we can kind of clarify that in that item number four, use of city equipment as well, but, you know, if it goes down while there is snow in the city.
During use of a city event. So basically, designated equipment, the contractor with approval from the street supervisor or designated appointee may use designated equipment in the event contractors' equipment is out of service during the use of a city event. And the equipment will be leased at a price based on the contracted. Less our possible, or, I guess, less cost of their movement.
Yeah.
All right, we'll revisit this, date certain of October. We're gonna be the fifteenth because of the holiday. Big certain, October fifteenth.
That's the turn of the question.
Yeah.
So instead of adopting the previously seen, the other resolution number, was it correct to move on with the new resolution number or can I go back to the original?
Who, who is, who is the person that made the motion to?
Councilmember Jordan Lee.
When we do this, maybe you can make a motion to, um, make the, uh, rest of the change.
On the, on the table and then with the hammer.
I think it's the, I think that's what Robert told me, he's person made the motion.
Okay, so on the fifteenth, when this comes back.
Yeah.
I'll amend my motion.
Yeah.
And adopt the new version of the contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So on scope of services shall line six, last sentence, it says, use the city-owned equipment by contractors.
That's what we're fixing. So I think that is provided in this agreement. Any other, is there a discussion? All right. Consent agenda. We're both paying September ten, Department of Energy reports and monthly financial. Questions, comments?
Consent agenda, Mayor? I would move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Amber Corr.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Item six has been scratched, moving to item seven, new business. Approval of resolution number twenty-three ninety, resolution city of Bellevue, Idaho, authorizing the mayor to execute renewal of service contract with mountain humane for facilities and services for care of impounded animals. They kept the rate the same as last year. We did not have a ton of use on it this year, but I think it is one of the best services that we get at that rate. Anything, Marshall?
They've actually been very good to work with this year.
This is charged with, when they put a dog, I know there's some, you can put a chip in dogs.
Yeah, they, they require the chip in, in lieu of of our license, like on the collar.
I think that's where it's moving toward, chips and then we can have chip readers if they want, if they want to get any.
Not quite that easy, but yes.
A lot of that stuff is on a database and depending on which chip they use, they have multiple databases. And some are, some chips can do medical, like, temperature and different things on the dog. Others are just basic IDs. And, you know, if the dog gets transferred to another owner, that needs to be updated, so it's not always correct. I don't think it's a policy that our, our officers don't need a chip reader. I think the humane, mountain mane.
We currently have some, and as long as we're not busy.
Yeah.
We will read the animal, but we're not going to find an animal to read it. So if it's very friendly, wanting to love on us, then we'll love on it. And as long as, like I said, as long as we're not busy, but if we're calling a call, then we just take it straight out. I would also like to say Sockit Animal Center, who doesn't charge us a penny, have been absolutely amazing. They allow us to drop the dog out there, especially like late at night or different times of day. And then later on, when we're not as busy, we can go pick up the dog and take it to the city. So Sockit Animal Center has been wonderful.
And there are plenty of Facebook and social media sites where people are posting lost pets, found pets. This is where the dog is. So I think we continue using those services. I think this contract is, and it's a fair price for the services that we get. You know, if we don't do it with them, then the only other place we have to take them to next is what she's shown or Quinn, Jerome.
They will even set it on that again.
So it's really our only option. Even though we do have a good relationship with Sockit.
They don't pick them up down here, we take them up to them.
Never. Question out. I moved to approve resolution twenty-three ninety, a resolution of the city of Bellevue, Idaho, authorizing the mayor to execute the renewal of ser, of the service contract with mountain humane for facility and services for the care of impounded animals.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Item B, approval of resolution number twenty-three ninety-one, resolution city of Bellevue, Idaho, authorizing the treasurer to release twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-nine cents from Strangor Face Two Bond Savings. LGIP four zero three seven, do Strangor Partners LLC. This comes off condition of finishing up some of the landscaping that is done. And so with, we've gotten the sprinklers back online at the parking area and then around the booster station, they've added more of a zero scape. We were looking at trees at first, but with assessing water trees and making grass and everything else, we've gone to some rock structures that will deter people from backing into the building. They grabbed everything around it. That looks pretty nice. So it has met that portion of the base two bond. Anything else, Shelly?
Um, no, the agreement provided that we have to pay the interest earned on it back, so that's why it's such a lot of out. Yeah, there was twenty-five hundred dollars of interest earned.
Is there a reason why there wasn't an attachment with that information?
All of that was.
I meant like, okay. Like stating, oh, it needed to be zero scape, stating that, oh, that had to be older and this.
What, what were you missing?
Just the document says what was required.
Oh, Goleana did not give me anything other than an okay via email if it, if it was okay with the city.
There was no requirement of a certain type of landscaping. It came to, after what we've seen, what happened with the sprinkler system down in the parking area and this the hassle to try to develop trees in that area. We had made an agreement that, let's go smart with this, let's keep it in a range land, zero scape, zero water use. It looks nice and there was no, there was nothing in the developer, was it?
The agreement.
Yes. It was nothing that was outlined that we have to put in X amount of trees or X amount of square footage to grass or anything. It was, needs to be landscaped, I guess was the term, so.
Okay.
May make a comment?
Yes, Joe.
Okay, Jeff Pathley, if you all have some questions, you know, please ask me or, you know, what your concerns are. What we did is to make certain that there would be no water usage or waste there. We went to the zero scape. There's, there's a layer of, of a weed covering so that weeds won't come up. Then there's another level, layer of materials. Then there's a layer of the chalice shale. The main, you know, reason we did it this way is The main, you know, reason we did it this way is mainly to make it something that you would never really have to take care of again. And the area down around the Idaho Power Vault, we actually did not extend the the shale covering because if they have to go in there, they go in there with big equipment. It would chew it up and then that would just, you know, create something that needed to be fixed. There really wasn't any specific plan per se. And what, what we did really, I mean, we spent the same amount of money that we would have if we'd actually put in sod or trees or bushes. When we did that before, there was about $15,000 or $20,000 of dead, you know, landscaping and trees, which we actually, I think it looks great now. That it's all cleaned up and it's just trimmed down. And, you know, once again, the idea was to give the city something that required no care.
I, this is Diane Shay, and I had a question. Wasn't this landscaping requirement discussed during the subdivision phase or during the PUD phase?
It has been discussed sort of ongoing since that time based on the experiences that occurred in the first phase and whether or not it was really the right thing to put in vegetation that needed to be maintained, to put in a water system that depleted the water from the city. And actually, I had conversations with members of the staff or, I mean, actually even Chris. And it just seemed like the, the best path, the most thoughtful path was to do it this way. And, you know, I certainly spent numerous times making certain that we wouldn't have a situation where when it was done, the council or in the city would be disappointed at all. You know, the hope is that they would be excited and understanding and, you know, welcome to comments.
I guess so from my landscaping experience, zero scape, you need to water those plants for the first two to three years until they're established and then they will be drought tolerant and you can remove water.
There are no plants there. It's all shale rock and then some larger, I would say, two foot, three foot boulders at this. There is, there is no vegetation.
Oh, right. I was talking about more like the parking lot. So those trees all die because they didn't have water, right? Right. And then they remove. So I'm just clarifying if they're moving for the zero.
Phase one was, the parking lot was in phase one. This is in phase two. This is just specifically around the booster station. We had talked about just putting a fence around it, but it's already a decent looking building that's secured and enclosed.
Yeah.
A fence did not seem appropriate. We did not want to waste the time and energy to put in the trees because it's not the made of landscape out there.
And I, and I'm not questioning that at all. I just was wondering if there was another place where discussion about landscaping or zero scape or whatever it was had been memorialized in findings of fact or development agreement or something. It's not.
In my mind, it was supposed to be drought resistant.
Yeah. I, I seem to recall that too. I just, you know, wanted to check and see if that was something that had been discussed previously. Not wanting to go backwards and require it now. Absolutely not.
Oh, we can go back through the phase two agreement. I think we're reading the intent and as we go forward to phase three, we'll ensure that we double check those things before we make any agreements.
Excuse me, can I say something else?
Yes.
In the interim, you know, I believe Diane, historically, the head of the, the planning department had the ability to accept or approve landscaping. And during this long period of time, there has really been no one there to talk about this. So the conversations have been, quite frankly, with the street department, with Chris, with, you know, anyone that was, you know, accessible within the city to make certain, we needed to get it done. So to make certain that in the end, what we did was the most natural, which I believe it is. It's bulletproof, which it is. I can't imagine really a better, a better result. And once again, there was nothing in the, in the planning and zoning requirements that would say, oh, you have to put in, you know, 20 Aspens or, you know, what have you.
I think it looks great out there, Jeff.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
I think, I think it was a smart move and Jeff had sent me photos of ideas previous to all this with rock ideas and I, I think it was a smart move.
Yeah.
We're not gonna tell it. So, thank you. Actually, in the future, I think where there were questions is we weren't given full information of what the money was for or like what the stage was. So thank you for bearing with us as we discuss through that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? I move to approve Resolution Number 2391, a resolution of the city of Bellevue, Idaho, authorizing the treasurer to release $28,272.59 from Straight Horn Base Two Bond Savings, LGIP 4037 to Straight Horn Partners LLC.
Sorry.
I say Jerome.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Anything else to discuss?
The Hispanic Heritage Event on Saturday was great. I mean, I think if they're going to be forward in doing it in the future, they would want to do it a little bit later in the day. That's typically when most people get off work. So like towards the end, that's when it started filling up. But there's conversation about them wanting to actually do more events like that in the park. The one thing I did notice was the trailers going on to the park there. I don't know if that's something, you know, I know parks in Bellevue, but having trailers park on the side so we don't tear, tear up our grass with vehicles for future events at that park. It was just the only comment. But it was great. They had great food. There was clothing that I actually wanted to buy for my kiddos. Their, the bands were great and it was just a really great scene.
Anything else?
Yep.
Oh, should do a journey?
I haven't finished journey.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, yeah.